Good evening, everybody. Calling to order the July 16th meeting for the Westlake School Committee. Members present Angelo Gouthals, Mike Ober, myself, Tim Killam, Peter Nero. Welcome back, Mr. Nero, Lori Wykall and Mr. Jackson will not be joining us this evening. Angelo, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Mr. Ober, could you read our mission statement?
To create an inspiring, challenging and supportive environment where students are encouraged and assisted in reaching their highest potential.
Thank you. All right, first up here under presentations, we have a transportation staffing fleet September readiness status.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Scott, if you wouldn't mind coming up to the table here, you can grab a microphone. I thought it would be a good time at this meeting to introduce with the retirement of Sugorino. We have elevated Scott Fresbo to Director of Transportation. Scott's been doing a terrific job and I thought it would be a good opportunity for him to come in, introduce himself to the committee, but also kind of give you an update on what are really three big topics there. The staffing issues that continue to be a challenge for us, we know that drivers and monitors and where we are with that. But he is making some headway there. Second is the fleet, which includes, you know, our, our gas powered vehicles, our electric vehicles, where we are with that. And then also what's going to be on everybody's mind is the readiness to open in September. So a lot of the routes are already being set up and established. So we should be good to go there. But again, I'll turn it over to Scott and let him take it from there and talk you through the document you have in front of you. It's all yours, my friend.
Hi, how are you? My name is Scott Fresbo, as he had mentioned. I came to Westlake almost two years ago now. I came here as a bus driver. I came from STA Groton as a bus driver there. Prior to being a bus driver, I retired from West Hartford Fire Department as a lieutenant.
I'm sorry, could you please speak in the microphone? Pull the mic closer to you, Scott, please.
And so over 20, a little over 23 years I spent in the fire department. I served in ranks of firefighter, driver, majority of the time, and then retired. I did three years as an officer, a company officer for running the daily operations of a, of a fire station, not the entire department. But so where I wanted to start for the department's status of the transportation department staffing. So when I became the safety coordinator, which was just before a previous director, Susan Berino had gone out on medical leave, which was a couple of weeks after I started trying to bring in some more people into the department. And at the point we are today, we're budgeted for 25 bus drivers. We have today 24 bus drivers. Van drivers were budgeted for three. We have two. I do have an interview scheduled for tomorrow for another van driver. Also, one of our current van drivers is in the process of training to become a school bus driver. So hopefully at before the beginning of this year, she'll be a bus driver. Bus drivers can also act as van drivers. So if we have van routes, they do not go unfilled because there isn't specifically a van driver. Also myself, because I was previously a driver, I am maintaining my certifications as a driver. So if we get to the point where we're, you know, have a few callouts, then I'm, I'm available to be able to drive also. Monitors were budgeted for 15. We have four. Monitors is a tough position to, to fill. It's a small audience. A lot of times it could be stay at home parents that have kids in school or retirees that want to get out of the house and do something. Aides, we are budgeted for six. We have six. And our crossing guards, we have the three crossing guards that are budgeted. We have three. And then our bus technicians, which right now the, we only have our lead technician. That position has been unfilled for a very long time, a very important position and trying to get that filled. Any questions on staffing?
Okay. So our current fleet of our buses, we have three styles of buses that we're using. We have, we call them type Cs, but you know them as the full size buses. We have mini buses, which are two different, they're a type A and a type B, but they're very similar. And then we have our vans. So our current fleet, we have 24 of the full size buses. Twenty, two of them are newer Bluebird style and they consist of three electric powered, 11 gasoline powered. Two of those gasoline powered are spares, six diesels. One is a spare and one is our activity bus. So if you've ever seen the Bulldogs bus, that's our activity bus. It can only be used to take students on a field trip or sports activities. It cannot be used for to and from school. And then I, we have two internationals, which are 2014s. They, they are very old buses and would be only used in the last resort. Unfortunately, over the last year, we did have to use them a couple of times. But we have been very proactive getting everything up to snuff as far as everything's repaired. We have one gasoline bus that is still out for a long term repair, but we're expecting that within the next couple of weeks to be back. We have seven of the mini buses. As on the report, it shows that most of them all were purchased between 2018 and 2020. So they're getting up there in age. Those are going to be probably our next ones that we're going to have to look at as far as, you know, future replacements. We have four Chrysler vans, caravans. One of those is dedicated to transitions and they always have that one. And then we run the three routes with the caravans. The next coming year, we're expecting some changes in the fleet. With four new electric buses, two were already pre-purchased in the previous year. Those are scheduled to arrive either August or September, hopefully before the beginning of the school year. At that time, we're going to take two of our older diesel buses and make those spares. Until the next two are delivered in December or early January. These are information that I was provided from Rudy. Those are the 26 budget year are the, the second two buses. Also, at the time of the first two, we're going to retire the two 2014s that are the oldest buses. At the December delivery, two of the gasoline buses will now become spares. And the two 2016 diesel buses that I just mentioned would be retired. So at the, after that, we would still remain at a fleet of 24. We're not increasing our buses. We're just going to, you know, rotate them out. For the vans, we have two Toyota, 2025 Toyota Grand Highlanders that are to be delivered. One has already been delivered. The next one's here in the next couple of weeks. Those will be outfitted with the school bus signs and all the other safety equipment that those need before they can be inspected and actually be used for to and to home and school. Any questions on our fleet?
So Scott, 10 years is, is getting pretty long in the tooth for a bus, right? And you were talking about the type Cs.
The type Cs are usually listed as a 12 year replacement cycle.
And then what kind of mileage do you get on in 10 years, a 12, what kind of mileage are we looking at?
Anywhere from 100 to 130,000 is usually the, the breaking point for those. So hopefully as they get a little, you know, if they're reaching the 70 or 80,000, that's when we would want to put them in a spare status and only go out every now and then so that we get that useful life out of the bus.
Thanks. And what's the status right now with the, the electric bus purchases? I know, I think I know the grant funding came through for one, but not the other, correct?
So that's an additional one.
Right.
That, that's further than when I spoke to Rudy last, that we have, excuse me, two that have already been ordered. Those were in a previous budget cycle and those are due to be delivered at the end of August. There are two more that are to be ordered that were in the 26 this budget cycle. Those are the two that are coming out of this budget cycle to be purchased. The grant award was a, an additional one, which the only, I got the notification that was last week or so. So I did not include this in this because at that point it was whether or not it's actually happening, I don't know.
Right, right. Okay, thank you. I, I don't know if it's directed Scott or Dr. Garcia, we approved two more in the 26 budget cycle of electric buses?
And those are mostly grant funded. So approximately 70, 75% of the cost. Any other questions on the fleet?
Just a couple. How many miles on average do we put on a bus during the course of a school year?
During the school year, it varies by bus, but roughly each bus is probably doing between, I can say daily is like 60 to 70 miles. They're doing two, two complete runs a day, you know, full morning, bringing it, bringing all the students to school. The bus is doing a high school, a middle school and an elementary school run. And then in the afternoon, they're doing the reverse on the way out. Then there's a few additional buses that are used for late buses, for trips, for sporting events and, you know, any, anything extra in that, that case.
So because every time I, and I believe I've been through this in my own capacity in my, my life. But I, every time I drive by Stonyton High School, first student has a sign there, they're looking for bus drivers all the time. Are wages, are wages competitive with say the private slate for a student and?
So one that I, I can specifically talk to is STA Groton.
Yeah.
Our bus drivers are like within a dollar an hour of STA Groton's top step. They are slightly lower, not immense amount of lower. But then there is also a few other differences, which is within the benefits package. You have PTO time that's available to our drivers, which is not available to their drivers. And then that also goes with holidays too. There's a very big difference in the number of holidays.
And what's the longevity and retention of our bus drivers on average?
So here we have quite a few drivers that have been here in upwards of 40 years. We have a few that are, yeah. That is another thing that's in my mind because we do have, I believe it's six drivers that are 65 or older. So I need to plan for the future that, you know, retirement's around the corner and we need to be able to refresh that. You're welcome. Last part on the second page is just for our preparations going into the new school year. The routing and planning, that the routes themselves have all been carried over from the last year. So those are in place. There's been some minor modifications with students. Examples are fourth grader going into fifth grade. So now they're not on an elementary school run, but they're on a, on a, a middle school run. So they need to be on that proper bus where before, as soon as you just bring everything over, they're all on the same bus. And so there's a little bit of moving around there. So those modifications are getting done currently and they're probably about 75% of the way done. But that, that will be prepared and ready for our bid meeting. All the drivers will bid for their, their runs again. That's already scheduled for August 19th. And then our kickoff meeting, which is where we bring everybody back together and we'll do all our safety briefings for the year. Any new information, go over student, student management and, and the likes of that. We're also going to be upgrading our routing and planning software. It's still by the same parent company that, that, that designed the Versatrans that we had been using. One of the major differences is the Versatrans is done locally. So it's on our servers. It has to do a regular IT has set it up where it does a rollover every night. So it brings all that information into the system every single time. And that's how our drivers get the information on their tablets. The new software is going to be cloud based, which also means it's live. So you don't have to wait till the next day for a change. You make the change, the driver won't even know it. They'll, that change can be made on the fly. It also, there's a lot, there's more tools available to us to be able to monitor what our runs are doing to try to make them more proficient. You know, does it look like we can move a student from one bus to the, to another bus? Or if we see one, one route's taking so much longer than another one, then we can, we can evaluate that more efficiently and to try to keep everything so that we don't have long runs. And then we can redistribute and make the buses a little bit more even so we don't have overcrowded buses. Any questions?
Couple more.
Sure.
I guess, are you, are you planning to do more of, and I, I also sat on the special education committee. And I know one of the complaints that we got from a lot of parents was not having adequate cross trained aides, bus drivers, et cetera, for special needs buses. So I, are you, are you working toward making sure that that happens? Cause it, it has not happened in the last few years.
Yeah. So the, all of our drivers and monitors and aides right now are currently trained in, you know, how to use the lifts on the bus, how to interact with students of special needs. And that continues. So each new driver gets that same training. Sometimes maybe they don't get to experience that as much. And then, you know, when it comes time, if they're going to fill into that, then maybe we have to do a, you know, a, just like a brush up to reintroduce them into that. But that is, you know, it is the goal to make sure that anybody can fill any of those positions.
Okay.
And part of that with the, because our staffing of bus drivers is getting more towards where we should be. When we have spare drivers on board, when every bus is rolling out with a driver, then if I have drivers sitting behind, they're going to be filling in, in either an aide or a bus role. If, I mean, a monitor role so that they're not just sitting there and, you know.
That's great. And I mean, you know, this pastor, my son obviously runs a ride, the special needs bus. His driver has some kind of superpower. He's missed like four days in three years, I don't know how. And, and Scott actually filled in and he was great. One, let's see, a couple of the quick questions. I know we're talking the, on the EV buses with the grant funding. So we haven't secured it yet for those, correct? Or we're missed, what hasn't been secured for grant funding, I guess? Cause I know with this current administration, like there's a lot of grants getting cut. So I'm concerned that we don't get on the, one of them.
Those, those two additional that I said for December.
Yep.
The grant funding for that is secured.
Okay.
That, that has already been, I believe the checks actually have been already cut.
Okay. But the ones in December?
No, that's the ones in December.
Okay.
The ones coming in August are actually all done in, so the, the manufacturer actually has the check. They're, they're already on the, in the line and will be delivered in August.
And just the other question is, are you working with like Westlake? I mean, obviously you're a retired firefighter, working with the fire department as far as, do you feel like they're adequately trained and prepared if one of these things catches on fire?
So that I do not know 100%. But yes, that is a concern of mine and would like to get them involved. At a minimum to get them to look at the bus and see where some of the emergency shut offs are. And, you know, things that they would need to be concerned about if there were any type of event.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, it should have happened by now, seeing we have several of them on the road already. But that needs to happen because I mean, I mean, I'm not going to lie to you. I am not a proponent of these things. I think they're a stupid idea, but you know, my son has ridden one for the last couple of years. And the amount of time that thing has missed on the road is just, it's ridiculous. I think this investment is just, it's, it's not there. I've owned an electric vehicle. They're great to drive, they're fun, they're a lot of fun, but I just don't think the technology's there personally. So I'm, I'm concerned that we make sure we're in a good spot with them. It's just, it is what it is. I'm not a supporter of them.
Yeah. So I, I mean, just there are studies out there that have been done. I do know that gasoline power and diesel power actually have a higher rate of becoming, catching on fire than an electric bus. I do like the electric buses also. I think that a school bus is like a good platform for that. Because you go out, you do your run, you come back, you charge it. You go out, you do your run, you come back, you charge it. So you're not far away, you're not, you know, running and saying, oh, where's that next charger that I need to get to, to be able to charge it? And, you know, I, they are safe. Obviously all over social media, there's always those, you know, as soon as one has an incident, you know, it's, it's plastered all over the place. But, um, and, you know, with those concerns, yes, I, I do want to get the fire department involved because they need to know that these are on the road. And for many reasons, not just if, if there's a fire, but even if there's an accident involved with it. So that they know that their members are not going to get hurt either, because there's certain things on the buses, you know, they shouldn't be touching and, and you don't want, and you want to make sure that they're protecting the children from that as well.
So Scott, I would think, well, I'm not going to assume, but I, I would think that the fire departments have had training on how to address electric vehicles, whether they're like, any, any of the brands that are electric cars on the road. So they, they know how to address that kind of situation. But I, to Mr. Killam's point, I think it'd be an excellent idea for us to reach out to the fire departments to let them know that we have buses on the road as well. And like you said, where those shut offs are and how, how they can address those. So let's try and get that done this summer. We'll reach out to the, to the two chiefs that we deal with primarily. Yeah, I mean, and I mean, by trade, I mean, I own a marine electronics company. We sell lithium batteries. I mean, we, we do. And I, I agree with you. I mean, out of all the fires I've had in the last three years in boats, not one of them's been a lithium fire. Don't get me wrong, I'm not saying that, but it's if there is one being prepared to put that thing.
Oh, yes, yeah.
It's a really big deal.
Yeah.
And, and that, that is more my concern. And my, and my last concern I'll just share with the electric buses is if we get a top heavy fleet of electric buses and their range and field trips and whatnot, you know, I have that concern. I know we're going to have to keep a balance because they're not going to be able to do some of those trips.
Yes, and I, I agree that the fleet needs to be balanced. There, yeah, we shouldn't, I don't think that we can get to a point on current technology where we could do 100% electric fleet. It would not make any sense for us to do that. We have trips that are going out to Providence all the time, you know, sometimes to Hartford. An electric bus is not going to make that trip even on a good day.
I'm not sure if I heard the superintendent, but my just thought was, I mean, our bus is not the only electric vehicles on the road. I mean, there are literally in Wesley, tons of Teslas and all types of hybrids and whatnot. So they're not the only ones. So I'm sure the fire department knows when they get to a scene, the question is, is it electric or is it a gas engine? And again, I don't want to go too far because we, we spent a lot of time, but it's not the only vehicles in, in, in Wesley or in that, for that matter, anywhere else that are electric, so.
Correct.
Thank you, Scott. I had a question about the capacity on the runs. And if, if the capacity falls below a certain number, at what point you might consider combining runs or maybe downsizing the fleet? I don't know if that's something that's been talked about or that might be a consideration.
So on our larger bus, the full size bus, the capacity is 71 students. Now that is elementary students. So it makes a difference as you get older, how many you're going to fit in there. But it is, it is marked that it says you can do 71 students. For example, the majority of our middle school buses are anywhere between 50 and 60 students each bus. So before you would start combining runs, you would probably need to be less than, you'd have to have two buses less than 35 just on capacity level. But there, the other part of that is where those buses are bringing the students. You know, are those buses going completely two different other ways in, in, in town? Would it make sense to put them all on that one bus and it makes that bus take twice as long to go around? So it, it's efficiency, time, and then cost. So tho- those are the factors that would determine whether or not you can do that or not.
Great, thank you so much, Scott. We really appreciate that and thank you for answering all of our questions.
Thank you for your time.
All right. Next here we have our 2024 audit presentation. There's boxes.
Having just enough? Okay.
Evening, everyone. Jim Wilkinson is here from CBiz CPA firm, formerly Markham, to present the 2024 audit of financials for the school.
Good afternoon. Thanks for inviting me down to give a little background on the audit process, who we are, what we've done. Happy to take questions as we go through or at the end of the, the outline. I just thought we'd start a little bit, again, as I'm a CPA and with, I'm a managing director with CBiz. We've been conducting the town's audits for a few years now, and we're just starting our planning for the 25 audits. As the independent auditor, our role is to apply tests to the financial data of the town and school department and component units, study internal controls, look for risk areas, you know, delve our testing into those areas based on that risk assessment process. A big part of that process is interactions with those charged with governance, school committees, town councils, to learn what keeps you up at night, where do you believe the risks are, what input we should be, you know, taking into consideration in our process. So tonight is the start of that. We will also, at the end of our planning process, we'll be issuing a planning communication outlining our results to date, where we believe the risks are, where we intend to, you know, focus our testing, what areas we consider to be significant risks. Certainly from that, we're happy to have dialogue on those, answer any questions you may have on that before we get into the execution of the audit engagement. We had a planning call this, this afternoon with both school and, and town personnel. Our, our planning process will begin now, anticipating year-end field work to begin in October. Take approximately four to six weeks. We'll have draft reports in mid-November and work to get the town back on the December 31st issuance timeline. This audit was delayed. There were some reconciliation findings that we had that caused a couple of starts and stops and some delays in the, the closing process. Last year, again, the, the corrective action plan has been reviewed. It's part of the single audit package that, that's been issued. Largely those things we believe have been corrected at this point and should not reoccur in the future. So. The school department, again, being a department of the town of Wesley, its activities are dispersed within this report and hidden. It's, it's not very prominent. While the school unrestricted fund is legally its own separate entity, its own separate fund, the accounting standards don't allow it to be presented as a separate fund. It's blended within the town's general fund as net activity. Page 176 and 177 of the report actually show the two columns between the town and the school department's unrestricted fund. So if you're looking at from a granular perspective, if you're looking at, you know, net position, fund balance, revenue expenditure activity, I would direct you back to those pages. Because a, an official budget is adopted, the school unrestricted fund budgetary results are shown separately within the financial statements. That's on page 129 of the package. I know a lot of people like to start there, comparing actual to budgeted results. Largely, the results of budget were very much in, the actual results are very much in line with the budget. There was some positive results in both revenues being slightly above what was anticipated, as well as expenditures being about $773,000 below what was anticipated. So it was again, positive budgetary results for the 2023-24 fiscal year. Overall, our responsibility is to express an opinion on the financial statements as a whole. That opinion is included in pages 17 to 19. We did express an unmodified opinion or clean opinion that the financial statements are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Always good news to deliver when we don't have to have qualifications or exceptions. So town should be very proud of that. And following our audit opinion on page 23 to 33, management's discussion analysis is really a narrative presented by town and school management on the results of the fiscal year. It talks in English what all of our columns and tables and charts and numbers do. So I will focus, you know, focus some time there. There's a lot of explanations in there on what happened. There's some outlooks for the future years. And it really gives an introductory to all those individual financial statements to follow. Specifically dealing with the school department's unrestricted fund, the fund balance at June 30th of '24 was little over $8 million, an increase of about $640,000 from the previous year. The fund balance is really a snapshot in time with the general fund's assets and spendable resources are minus what its immediately due liabilities are, the net balance being that fund balance position. In accordance with, again, the accounting standards, some of that fund balance is shown as non-spendable. It's deposits with the finance paying agent for the health fund and some prepaid expenditures. The balance of the fund balance is either restricted for specific purposes or because the nature of the fund is education-based, the remaining balance is all committed towards education. So it's, it's, there's nothing shown there as unassigned or free fund balance to be appropriated. Certainly, the internal records, that committed fund balance can be allocated, re-appropriated at, you know, in accordance with state law, all under the guidance of, of the school committee. Everybody's generally concerned about retirement plans. Happy to report that all of the actuarially required contributions, the teacher plan, the municipal plan, those have all been made on time. While the financial statements do show a net pension obligation, that's very common, that everyone's pension is not funded upfront on their first day of their employment, that is done over the service time. The actuarially required contributions are designed to retire that obligation over the service life of the employees and provide the plan with funding to meet its obligations as they come due. There are no questions about that. The state's plan, while the liability is large, it's the overall liability for all teachers in the state. The town has a portion of that, but again, making the required contributions, similar to making your monthly mortgage payment, it's all scheduled. It's going according to plan. The assumptions that, that the actuaries use as far as rate of return salary increases is open to act by the order of general. The plan is in sound position, even though there's a pension liability there. Within the financial statement, there's one subsequent event which is significant to, to be disclosed. Subsequent to June of '24, the town issued $43.2 million of bonds with Ryback to fund capital projects for the school department. Luckily, that, it's been a year since that's been done. So some of that's probably been spent or reimbursed funding that had been expended prior to that bond issuance. Again, in overall, the statements are presented in accordance with standards and there's no glaring findings or material weaknesses or not compliant with laws and regulations that was noted as a result of our audit. Are there questions on the statements that we may be able to answer now?
I think everybody's taking it all in and trying to find all the right pages.
Yeah, there's a lot to read there. So it's, if you're having trouble sleeping some night, pull those statements out. 10 minutes, problem solved. And again, the findings that were noted as far as internal controls have, you know, largely been corrected at this point in time when those reconciliations were caught up. There were some changes in procedure that had been implemented with some turnover were reset. So again, we're not expecting that to be a risk area going forward. And again, as we go through our planning process, we, we, we do some comparisons to, you know, preliminary unaudited results to what the budgets were. We look for variances there. We do some studies of internal controls, how, you know, how bills are approved, how purchases are approved. Do some testing in that regard. We look at payroll, open positions, requisitions, breakage, pay rates, controls over that stuff. We take all that, we synthesize it into an overall audit plan, and that's what we'll communicate back to you when that process is done, where we anticipate doing our testing. Again, if there's anything that causes you concern, that you may not feel comfortable going to management with, you know, my contact information is, is available, be happy to have a conversation, make sure that your concerns are built in and part of our concerns. So again, the product that gets issued at the end is as accurate and fairly stated as possible.
What was that? Oh, you didn't have, okay. No. I think that was good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right. Next here, I will seek a motion to go into executive session under items RIGL 42-46-5A2, collective bargaining, and 42-46-5A1 superintendent evaluation.
So move second.
We have a motion in a second. All members in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, we will be back. Any opposed? Seeing none, we will be back. I think we're all good. Okay, and we are back. There were no votes taken in executive session. Seek a motion to keep the minutes of executive session confidential.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion in a second. All members in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Next here, we have our open forum. This open forum is on school committee agenda items only. Anyone who wishes to speak will be given five minutes. Anybody who wishes to address the school committee. Seeing none, we will move to our assistant superintendent's report.
Thank you. So on behalf of the high school leadership team, we're proud to share preliminary results from the two thousand twenty-five advanced placement, the AP exams, which reflect strong growth in both participation and performance. This year, two hundred and thirty AP students took a total of three hundred and ninety-eight AP exams across multiple subject areas. Notably, seventy-one percent of AP students earned a score of three on at least one exam, a substantial increase from fifty-seven percent in two thousand twenty-four and forty-two percent in two thousand twenty-three. A score of a three is considered qualified, which is generally considered passing the exam. Standout performances include ninety-three percent of students scoring a three or higher in English language and composition, and ninety percent of students scored a three or higher in physics. In addition, two students independently prepared for the world history AP exam outside of their regular school day and without earning credit. One student earned a score of five, and the other a score of four showcased remarkable dedication and achievement. These results reflect the commitment of our students, teachers, and families to academic excellence. Westlake Public Schools will continue to support high expectations and rigorous opportunities for all learners. Next, I rose just passed to you a family guide. So over the, it's, so I'm pleased to share that this is our new family guide that our leadership team developed throughout the year. It's outlines key expectations and milestones from pre, across grade level bands from preschool through twelfth grade. So that way, parents can actually understand what types of assessments might students might be given, the different benchmark opportunities, what, how do, how are students assessed and measured to pass different state assessments? So it's just another way to communicate our clear expectations through high school graduation. So the next phase will be for me working with technology and publishing it, make sure it's accessible on the website, translated, et cetera. So we're excited to roll this out. We'll have some hard copies available in the main offices at all the schools as well. And so this is just another way that we're working towards in communicating that, you know, Wesley is the school of choice as part of also our strategic planning work. And finally, just another reminder that the community, to the community that the district has begun serving free meals to children eighteen years old and younger. Now through August first, at the White Rock soccer fields from eleven-thirty to twelve-thirty, weather permitted. And remember, you must eat on site to receive the meal. Thank you.
Anybody have any questions or comments? I will just say thank you to you again, Steve. I just love that. Seems like you have a lot of things that you come here to celebrate and share with us, and our students are excelling and doing amazing things. And I also really like this idea because I feel like for years we've heard the no communication conversation. I think this is just like a really good, it opens up the door to make it easy for the school and for parents and families, so.
Yeah, and it also can be a tool for parents to ask. There's questions that are in, that are built in for parents to ask their teachers at conferences or whatever. So that way you can have a focused conversation around academic success.
Great, thank you. Next here, we have our superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So in addition to what Assistant Sue Marone shared, you know, I think we'd both like to recognize Principal Mullen and the culture that she's working really hard at Wesley High School to cultivate around improving opportunities and outcomes for kids. This year, as we've discussed previously, we had significant increases in our PSAT and SAT scores at the high school. We recently had the highest in Wesley High School history scores on the next generation science assessments. And then all of the, the achievements in the advanced placement and dual enrollment programs that we have. Kelly has worked really hard to build excitement around stretching, taking higher level courses and excelling in those. So she and her team are to be recognized for that as well. In addition to Mr. Marone driving a lot of this work around ensuring that the assessments that we have in place are aligned to the curriculum, and that we're continuing to see gains. So it's been an excellent year for Wesley High School. As far as my report, I want to share that significant work continues to be accomplished both in and outside of Springbrook and Dunn's Corner schools. At this point, we are not expecting that all of the work at those schools will be completed for September second. But we, the members of the school building committee, myself, Justin, the architects, the owners, project manager, have been having ongoing discussions with the architects and contractors, and have worked with them to prioritize work on all issues related to health and safety. So as to ensure that the buildings are ready to welcome students and staff beginning the last week of next month. So there are a lot of, there will be a punch list in September. But things like ensuring that fire alarms are properly, properly reinstalled and electrified, that the water pumps are all in place, that all of those things are addressed. We are prioritizing those so that again, we'll be in a good position to open there. There will be still landscaping and things happening through September. But frankly, to plant seed now would be a waste of time. So we're going to hold off on that until things start to cool off a little bit, and those things will continue. But the buildings are going to be ready to open, and they're going to be looking terrific. We did a ton of work last summer. We're getting a ton of work done this summer. And all of it at those two buildings should be wrapped up by, I would think, mid-October at the latest. But again, we're prioritizing those things that are absolutely necessary to ensure that we can open. Likewise, work also continues at State Street School, and that building is very quickly taking shape now. We don't anticipate any problems with being able to open the new school on that campus in September of two thousand twenty-six. Parents and staff, students shouldn't really expect any needed changes to traffic patterns or drop off and pickup procedures at State Street as compared to this past year. Those that were in place this year will remain so at this point. So if there are any changes there, we'll be, we'll be sure to update the community, but things are moving along well there. And Principal Forward has an excellent, excellent hand on what's, what's happening there with the campus. There's been a lot of discussion in the news and locally regarding the holding of title grants, federal monies that are administered through the Department of Education. This is not just a Rhode Island issue at all. This is something that's happened in all fifty states. So at this point, our Title I and Title IV grant monies have been released and are in district. Titles two, Title II, which deals with professional development primarily, and Title III, which supports the provision of instruction for students that are multi-language learners or English language learners, are still under review. So the administration, Steve and myself and Cindy, and then principals, are continuing to work through what, what will have to happen to, to close those gaps and make sure that those positions and those supports are in place. When it comes to Title II, we're talking about roughly a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, which part of it is, for example, point seven one funding of the FTE of our, one of our coordinators, our STEM coordinator position. And in also in Title II, there's approximately fifty thousand dollars in Title II that was allocated to the district for professional development. That is on hold. When it comes to Title III, we're looking at about eighty-one hundred dollars being withheld at this point, not, not big money by any means, which funds point one eight of a MLL paraprofessional position. That's primarily at Springbrook Elementary School. So there's a lot of things changing. The monies do continue to get released. We'll, we'll continue to work through that. In addition to that, I also had the AP data in here, but Steve stole that thunder, so he's, and he's welcome to it. He's welcome to it. So I want to scroll down here. Also, something that we'll have to keep an eye on is that as of June twenty-sixth, it was signed into law. Every school in Rhode Island is now going to be required to have a policy in place prohibiting students from accessing electronic devices, including cell phones during the school day. This bill was introduced by Senate Health and Human Services Committee Chairperson Alyssa Murray and Rep. Julie Casmaro in March. It was signed into law on June twenty-sixth, and it requires that each public school have a policy regarding the use of personal electronic devices on school grounds and during school-sponsored activities, according to a recent release on this bill. It also prohibits physical access of devices during the school day, with exceptions allowed for assistive technology and other special needs specified in students' individual education plan, IEP, or five oh four plans. Other exceptions will include usage for medical needs such as rootpost monitoring, emergent monthly langle, learners for language accessing programs, or in the event of a general emergency. So this law takes effect August first of two thousand twenty-six. We have time to get policy into place, and certainly there'll, there'll be guidance from various organizations about what that policy needs to look like. As the committee and the community are aware, in recent years, we have been kind of tightening down on the use of cell phones during the day. It's primarily an issue at the high school more than the other two levels. But we will have to have something in place unless things change, that, that it makes clear that access to cell phones during the day is to be prohibited. We have time to work on it again, but time goes. So we'll have to work on that through next year. That concludes my report for this evening. Thank you very much.
Anybody have any questions or comments for Dr. Varso? No? All right. Next here, we have our financial report, and Cindy has no report. All right, so we have consent agenda. Chair seeks motion to approve items eleven A and eleven B on our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. All members in favor?
Aye.
Any? Oh, that's correct. Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes. Next here, we have under new business, our first reading of the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act Policy, twenty-five sixteen.
So we, over the last year, well, spring into summer, we had an audit of titles, Title I, two, three, McKinney-Vento. And one of the, what came out of the audit specifically for McKinney-Vento was that we don't have a policy. So this is the information that needs to be in a policy for McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act. And I also wanted to use this opportunity to introduce Megan Bussey, who is our community liaison. And as part of that role, she is the liaison for supporting students that are experiencing homelessness in Westlake. So if there are any questions, she can help as well.
Anybody have any questions? Or is there anything that you would like to share about? No? Okay. Go ahead, Angela.
I wonder if there's a requirement for specific language as far as communication with parents and/or children who are experiencing homelessness? Because I know that we're increasingly moving toward, you know, apps and digital communication. So if a child or family doesn't have a home or doesn't have Wi-Fi or something, I wonder if there might be room for language around, around that.
So that wasn't on the recommended checklist of, for the policy. But Megan can maybe speak to experiences that you've had with families in assisting them? Megan, you're gonna have to come up.
Come up and use the mic. Sorry. I know.
So we are able to get hotspots for families that do not have internet. I have a work cellphone that they provided me, so I'm able to talk to a lot of the parents, either through their emails or text messages. Also, FaceTime is something that I have done in the past because if they are on any Wi-Fi, they're able to access those things. It's just the making the phone calls. But we would definitely take a moment and see their needs and make sure to address them.
I think my question, this is something we can talk about, I think, at another point, but I would just be curious to see the numbers about like our students who are experiencing homelessness or like home insecurity. Just because, you know, I think it's something we're seeing it increasingly happen, obviously. And I would just be curious like what that looks like specifically in our district. And obviously, something like this is going to help the stability. So I think that would just be a good conversation to have at some point.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. We could have, we could put together a small presentation and look at numbers, what resources in the community we're accessing and so forth, just to kind of give you a big picture of what it looks like.
And the only thing to remember is these are only family members that would, are willing to be identified as McKinney-Vento. We do have. We do have a handful of families that I'm aware of that do not want to be identified as that, but we can definitely give you the clear amount of how many students that's pre-K through 12th grade that we have as identified as. We, I try to say displaced, just because homeless, you know, our student population and other people can hear that. So that is how we identify, but we can definitely get anything you need.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything? No? And I do think, if anybody, if everybody's good with it, we could probably, I'll seek a motion to accept the policy as presented here in our agenda.
So moved.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
You can, you want to waive any future readings, is what you're talking about?
Yeah, unless there's.
You can, you can waive the second reading.
Okay.
And accept the policy. Two separate votes.
Okay.
One to waive, the second, and then two to accept the policy.
All right. First, we seek a motion to waive future readings of the policy 2516.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All members in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes. Now, I will seek a motion to accept policy 2516.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Cofield, second by Mr. Ober. All members in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes. Thank you. All right. Next here, we have item 12B, Finance Subcommittee Appointment, and Mr. Jackson is not here this evening, but I would like to appoint Mr. Jackson to our Finance Subcommittee.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion in a second. All members in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Seeing none. Thank you. All right. So next here, we have under 13A was Police Detail for School Committee Meetings. We had this previously on an agenda, and we decided to move it. And this is something that I had specifically requested, and it was just something I thought we should look at. On one hand, I think it's, obviously, we want to be safe, we want to be protected, but I also was just concerned, you know, if we're having these meetings or we don't know if we always need it, that we want to review it. But I'm open to any discussion or suggestions that people may have about this item.
I feel very strongly that we should keep the police detail, and without going into too much detail, it's a comfort. Our budget line item was $7,000 or something. It's well worth it to me to have the security of having an officer here at each meeting, and I would propose to keep it.
Yeah, I'm aligned with Lori on this as well. I think, you know, we've had really benign meetings. I think we have a good group, and we haven't had anything come forward, but, I mean, let's be real. I mean, the nature of everything right now is a little volatile, and people tend to get angry, and we've got a lot of things coming up. So I just say, you know, in my opinion, a quiet night for our officer is a really good night for us. So I would propose we just leave it alone.
Go ahead, Meg.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know, we're doing this as preventative, not because there's something going on. But yes, you know, as we see on TV and read in the papers, there are issues coming up at other schools that shows that we do need a precaution, and so I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, I'd say in an overabundance of caution, we should keep them at this time.
Yeah. Go ahead, Angela.
I agree with my colleagues. I will say, though, as far as considering the optics of having a police officer at meetings, sort of telegraphs that we can't respectfully, you know, debate and talk and have difficult conversations. So your point is well taken, I think, Madam Chair, that it is, it is a conversation that's worth having. At this point, I think it's best left alone, but I, I see where you're coming from as far as the necessity of it and just the faith that we can, that we can have difficult conversations and, and stay respectful and stay, you know, within the bounds of control.
Thank you. Yeah, I thank everybody for sharing their opinions. It was, like I said, just something to look at for us to consider. I don't think we need to get rid of them in any capacity if this is how we all feel, and I agree. We do want to keep everybody safe and just have that in mind. So we don't need to take any action there. We'll just keep things as is. So now we'll move on to correspondence. I do have a couple of things, but while I pull that up, does anybody else have anything they want to bring up? I did have, first one I had was, I was asked if on the town website, the school committee picture would be updated, because right now, it's the old school committee. I think it may have been updated most recently, but as of last week, somebody asked me when that was happening. I also received, we did receive a notice, some communication in regards to the superintendent evaluation that was on our agenda this evening. And we also received correspondence in regards to Title IX and our protocol around transitioning in transgender students within our district. And I believe that's all I had. Anybody else have anything for correspondence?
I just wanted to say to everyone that, first of all, you didn't get my card yet. My card thanks for your concern and generosity during my recovery from my surgery. Thank you very much, everyone.
You're welcome. All right. So if nobody has anything else for correspondence, next we have community liaison reports. Anybody have anything to report out? All right. Next here, we have future agenda items. Anything for future agenda items? Tim, go ahead.
I have two. Bill will probably yell at me, but the first one be, I'd like to see if we could have Bill actually give us a presentation on exactly what these executive orders that are coming out of Washington mean for us. And is it really law? And what, like, can you please, I'd like to get kind of a better understanding because you're the only lawyer here. So, and my second one, which actually kind of comes out of Dr. Garso's report regarding the technology thing, which I probably should have asked then, but I know when we had the bullying presentation by the principals, they talked about the QR codes at the middle school and the high school as being a way for students to report bullying, but if there's going to be a zero smart device within those schools, I guess we need to talk about what's going to happen to allow the students still to report that.
Great. So we'll add those on our list here. Okay, so we have our next open forum, which this open forum is on non-agenda items. Anybody who wishes to address the committee will be given three minutes. Is there anybody who would like to address the school committee?
Good evening, everyone. I don't know if this is proper protocol or not, but the correspondence that you received, Madam Chair, relative to Title IX and the transgender protocol, is that something that you can share with us, the public, or how do, can we find out like what that is?
I don't, we can have dialogue back and forth, but if you want to ask all your questions, and then we'll make sure we answer in our responses.
I'm sorry?
I said we can't have dialogue back and forth. So if you want to ask your questions, and we'll respond in our.
That's my question.
Is that all? I'm just saying, if you're speaking right now, we don't have dialogue with you. So you can ask any questions you have. At the end, we reply to what you're asking.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. That's really, that's really my only question, Madam Chair. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else who wishes to address the school committee? All right. Seeing none. So I will open it up for committee members to respond, but, Bill, I guess I'll ask you. So do I have to be specific as far as what's detailed in correspondence, or what's our way of getting it out there if we're sharing it?
Was that correspondence directed to you specifically? Was it directed to the committee? Was it directed to you in your capacity as chair of the committee?
The correspondence was sent to the full committee.
Full committee?
Yep.
You can reveal it. You can discuss it, mention it in response to that question, which was pretty specific, but you can.
So we all received a letter, oh, oh, we all received a letter from Mr. Carradell asking or suggesting that we remove our transgender gender non-conforming protocol because it was in direct violation of Title IX and the federal laws and the executive order that was passed. There was a discussion about it a little bit, I guess, without violating any Open Meetings Act, and my understanding is that the protocol itself has been removed from the website. But the process, the procedure of working with children in that case will stand as is on a one-on-one basis in giving each kid what they need in the schools. That's the way I understand it.
Yeah, and I mean, we were sent an article referencing Penn State, I believe, and just kind of giving some guidance there. And then to Ms. Wyckall's point, it was taken down from the school district website, but the protocol remains in place because there are still potentially people who could use it. So absent policy, you have operating protocols for the district, and that's something that we leave up with the administration.
As, as I had advised months ago, when there was some discussion, the administration has to have something that they can act on, that they can rely on to be consistent in these types of situations. But the protocol, as was published on the website, has been taken down.
Hopefully, Ms. Carradell, that answers your question. And, okay, all right. So with that, we will, I will seek a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
Motion in a second. All members in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none. Have a good night.